Bad on, you're not that often.
That is.
I've already knocked Gary's out.
Jerry.
Bad.
Word for is not gonna be good.
We'll call the Metropolis City Council order Monday, April the 22nd, 2013. Call the roll please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Corzine, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the many blessings that you've given each and every one here today. And Father, we pray that this meeting will be conducted, dear heavenly Father, for the betterment of the community. We pray that you will be with our community, dear heavenly Father, for the ones and that have lost loved ones. Be with the sick, not only the sick, dear heavenly Father, but be with the caregivers. Be with our nation, dear heavenly Father, of the many, many things that have happened since our last meeting and be with the families, dear heavenly Father, that have been affected, not only in Texas, but in Massachusetts, dear heavenly Father. The time of grief is just now starting for them when they have to realize, dear heavenly Father, that their loved ones are either mangled, dear heavenly Father, or gone. Be with our world leaders that give them the ability, dear heavenly Father, to do what they feel in their own right, dear heavenly Father, is best for the whole world. I pray that you will be with each and every one here, dear heavenly Father, tonight, that we will continue to strive for the betterment of the whole community we ask in our precious name. Amen. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the last bridge meeting. Motion made by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Citizens' report. Any more? Having none. Mayor's report. Under the mayor's report, I would like to start out in thanking each and every one that sits at this council chambers. I congratulate you on your reelection. We have a lot to do in the next two years and then probably the next four years. I do appreciate each and every one of yous for what you bring to the city. Every once in a while, we'll have a few challenging events and things like that, and that's okay. Because I can actually say, in my opinion, we have as good a council as the city of Metropolis has had in many, many years. It's a, we've learnt to grow in our own territory. Each and every one has something different to bring to the table, but I do believe each one that sits in these chairs here has the best interests of the city of Metropolis at heart. And I wanted to personally thank each and every one of yous for what you do. That doesn't mean to say that tomorrow, we might have, we might have a disagreement over one thing or the other, but what I think means the most to me is as we move those through the trials and maybe the difference of opinions, that's what we're all elected for, is to come up with the very best scenario that we can do for all the people involved. And what I guess means the very most to me, most of yous, I've known for a long, long time, some of yous I've known since you were kids. I do appreciate each one of you and I respect each one of you. So in saying that, I'm looking forward to the next four years. And like I said, we have a lot going on right now through the economic situation and as Mr. Abel will attest to, we've probably had more in the last six months that's happening in the city of Metropolis than we've had in the last six years. And all that, I believe, is, we can, we can put part of it to the foreside, that each and every one setting this table, when we actually put the Port District together. And Christie had to leave to go get her children, but that Port District, the board members that there are actually active people that want to do just as much for Massack County and the city of Metropolis as we do. So that gives us about sixteen economic development people that's actually working each and every day. And we do have a lot going on, I think, in the next three to six months. We're gonna have a lot more announcements of things that's going to be good for all of us, you know, more employment and stuff like that. And I do believe that the economy has, has made a little curve and is, is actually coming back a little bit. It does, you know, as I move around town and stuff like that, I, I noticed today, I had to go down to the park this afternoon for the bridge ministry thing, feed the people down there. Harris had a pretty good crowd down there for a Monday and several trucks, several buses and stuff like that. And believe me, what's good for them is gonna be good for them. So, but I did wanna thank each and every one of yous, you know, the people in the audience. Vicki spends a lot of time in, in her job, in public service to the city of Metropolis as barterist. Lindsay does a great job. Joe, right now, we haven't had an emergency yet, but he's gonna do a good job too, I know that. And Chief Morris, Chief Massey, Ms. Chris, and Frank, we, and Ken's trying to keep our phones up and stuff like that. So it's just all home folks here tonight. And I do want to tell you, I appreciate each and every one of you.
Mayor, I understand you've been elected to another board also.
I have. I don't know whether I was elected or appointed. Did I have to vote on me?
Yes, sir.
I may not be in there yet.
Flying colors.
Good. We're looking forward to that and give us an opportunity to speak not only in the city of Metropolis on this side of the river, but we're gonna have some input on the other side of the river through some economic things that I'm su, I'm sure Ms. Barfield had something to do with that appointment, and I do appreciate it and looking forward to it. So we will have a voice in what goes on in the pack roll and things like that. Looking forward.
Very good.
Has anybody else, I'll, I'll give up a little by time if you have.
Sorry, girl, stump?
Yeah. But I do appreciate well each one of yous.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor's report. There's something good now that we, that we're all going to be involved in, stuff like that, and there's times in, in our city family that some things that happen and things like that, that, you know, a lot of people put a lot of time and, and into the city government and things of that nature through labor. We are actually going to have some retirements here. Keith Stokes of the Light Department, after thirty years of dedicated service to the city of Metropolis, will be retiring. His last official day is the third of May. Also acknowledgement of retirement for Greg Bradford of the Street Department, after thirteen years of dedicated service to the city of Metropolis. His date is actually the third also. Johnny Suggs, which is in the Street Department, he'll be retiring after twenty years of dedicated service to the city of Metropolis. Each and every one of these individuals have been very good employees of the city of Metropolis. They've served their time well and have served the city well. We will be having a cake and ice cream on Wednesday for the three of them between the hours of 1:30 and 2:30. I encourage any of yous that's, that can, come by. And we are going to talk to these gentlemen and show them what we appreciate out of them. Now Johnny is actually not going to leave until about the 30th of May or something like that, but I thought it'd be nice if we put the two guys, you know, go through together and stuff like that. So if you see these gentlemen on the street, wish them well. And they're, they're all still young enough, they're gonna have a long time to enjoy theirselves, so.
We're gonna miss them, you know.
Lot of years' experience right there.
Very good.
You know, so. But for every older person that retires, you have a younger person that needs a, the chance to move up and then provide that and give them a chance to up their experience. First thing on the agenda is the announcement of the spring cleanup weeks from Bulldog System for the weeks of May the 13th and May the 20th. That'll be two running weeks right there. So we will be sending out some more notices and stuff like that, and there'll be something in the paper. First motion on the agenda. Motion to accept estimate from Massack Nursery for planning service for the baskets for Berry and Market Streets in an amount to be determined following the community assistance contribution that Ken has offered to, to go out and see what is available there. What's left, we'll make up from that. So move. Move by Mr. McManus and second by Mr. Barfield.
Got a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is that gonna come out of the TIF fund like it did last year?
We actually have it in two places. We can actually take it out of the general, we actually put it in there, or we can take it out of the TIF. That was Mr. Barfield saying. Motion made and second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept quote from Parks and Corporation for a pump for the water department in the amount of 1,0565. That's actually out of JK's.
JK's.
We actually, he thought it was gonna come up later than that, we was, you know, but since it did come in over my spending cap, I asked him to put it on there before we could approve it. Motion made and second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Next item. Motion to accept quote from Quint Utilities and Extevating in the amount of 2,145 for repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. Second, move by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Barfield.
Mayor, that work's already been done, right?
Yes.
As I noticed in our payouts.
Yes. We actually approved it at the meeting the other day. Quint was actually out there, Frank called a week ago.
Yes.
Something like that. We had a discharge, it was discharging back out. We knew we had a problem, took a track over to get it. I give him the authority, he did the track over and after we got it all up the valves and stuff had to be changed while he had it there, we just went ahead and let him do that.
Yeah, we discussed with the emergency the day that happened.
But even though it was kind of an emergency, if somebody would've walked in, it still needs to be, we didn't do it off in the expenditure, we just put it on here.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept the hiring of proposed pool staff for 2013 as presented. Second. Move by Mr. McManus, second by Mr. Mizel. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept Melrose Prosetics Incorporated Agreement in the amount of $15,000 amount to be reimbursed.
I'll make that motion.
On second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept additional piping repairs for the main inflow pump discharge heater quote from Harper Machine Shop in the amount of $2,150 for wastewater treatment plant as discussed at the Waterlight Street.
We don't seem to have that.
Down the Waterlight Street.
Yeah, it's middle ways down, the third one down on the Water Street.
Okay.
Nine thousand and ten five.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make that a motion.
That's the last one, the Waterlight Street. I apologize.
It's the last one?
Yes, the last one.
Very last one.
Yes, for $2,150.
Yeah, that's what we're building on.
Okay.
Okay, now.
I'll make the motion and second.
If it wasn't my order, I'd have no idea who made that motion.
Fine, it was us too, yeah.
Well, actually, I hate to give you any of my secrets or anything like that, but I fill my agenda out usually on Sunday or Monday. And as you can see, I've actually put the motions down of who made the motion, how them committees, and I just got the link stuck there. Sometimes I make a mistake, two and a half to erase it. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll remind you, Mr. Barfield, we won't do that again.
Yes, sir. Yes, that's okay, hey, no problem.
I can't think of.
Extra medium.
In the mayor's report, so we'll move to corporate council. Thank you.
In front of you and in your packets, you had a proposed second extension. We call it second because two years ago we did the first extension, to collective bargaining agreement with the Metropolis Professional Firefighters Association. If you want to discuss this, in particular, we could go to closed session, but having added if it meets with your approval, and I know it was a recommendation that came out of the finance committee that we approve it, we would just simply need to do the motion to suspend rules and place the ordinance on its passage and follow that up with an ordinance, move in the ordinance.
I want the motion to suspend rules and place ordinance 2013-5 on its, as second. Second by Mr. McManus. All right. Any discussion? Get him before the change of mind.
Yeah.
Call the roll, please.
Good job.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion where you adopt ordinance 2013-5 as presented, second.
Motion made by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. McManus.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next committee report. Metropolis Area Tourism, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the tourism commission did beat on April the 9th, and we have these two items being put forward to council. I will make the motions on both of these. I will make a motion to accept the recommendation for a grant application for the playground equipment for the Fort Massack camping area is funded in the amount of $12,090.71.
And this money does come from hotel.
Yes, and friends of Fort Massack donate some, I believe the state.
Am I right on that, Vicki? All right. I did ask, I actually called Chris today to make sure that everyone here would not misinterpret maybe the way that was on there. It will be public. And Chris actually explained to me, one of the reasons that he actually needs that is right now, there's no playground equipment in the campground area. So the people that's staying in the campground with children are actually crossing back and forth across those roads to get to the main campground over there. Plus, I think through their, their site person that takes care of the campground, one of the things that they've always said that the parents and stuff want to make sure that the kids are safe and secure. That way, in the campground, those kids will be able to play there, their parents feel a little more comfortable with them and can kind of keep an eye on them, you know. So I did call and question him that it would be if my family went out there to camp or whatever, it's not going to be restricted just for the campground area, it still will be a public playground.
Very good.
With, with saying that, Mayor, now as far as will the state or out there at the park, will they be responsible for taking care of it once it's installed?
And. They'll assume liability.
And they'll soon see if anybody gets hurt.
Yeah.
It'll be state.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just a grant, like any other, they become responsible, whatever they purchase, how they purchase, all that from that one forward, yeah, it's just a grant.
Okay, we do have a motion. We do have a second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
I will make a motion to accept the recommendation for the grant application for the SuperCity Boot Camp Memorial Day Morph is funded in the amount of $500.
Second.
I believe that's the Wounded Warrior Project.
Yes.
Tick, tick, can we, someone explain what this is? I know I've asked questions and no one knows even know what it is.
It's through the wounded warrior things. Mr. Barfield may know more about it than I do. I actually talked to the young man this afternoon. And I guess what they, Lindsay?
It's basically like a competition where they do a mile of running, a mile of, so many squats and so many pushups and then another mile of running. It's like an endurance.
Kind of like an Ironman.
Kind of.
Yeah.
But it will be all of just body, they don't use anything. And then all the money they get, they, the profits will go to their wounded warrior project. He has the SuperCity Boot Camp across from the fire department.
I think the fire department's gonna be involved in it by then. Are you gonna run in and stuff like that, Jason?
I've seen him do it and I don't want no part of it.
Smart move.
They've got a big proud evening over there and it's, it's tough.
But he's got EMTs on, on standby just in case.
Good. Again, this is hotel, motel tag, no problem.
Did that from cities? Answer your question pretty well, Mr. Carol.
Yes, it did, but I wanted to get it out to the public, I don't want to do it.
We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, that completes our Metropolis Area Tourism Committee Report Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next item, Waterlight Street, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, sir, Mayor, we met on the April the 16th. Now we have these following one, two, three items to bring forward to council for approval, and I will make the motion on each. First, I will make a motion to accept the purchase of a bucket for the caseload for McKeel equipment in the amount of $2,031.90 for the wastewater treatment plant.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizel. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make the motion to accept the purchase of drive tires for the Vactor truck in the amount of $1,489.80 from the Low Court of Lewis Tire for the wastewater treatment plant. And these old tires can be used on something else, a little truck or something.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Corzine. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
From the last one being, I will make the motion to accept PLC modifications for the new inflow pump system for BHMG in the approximate amount between $9,000, $10,000, $500 for the wastewater treatment plant. The difference in pricing depends on how many trips they have to make down here from Segalus.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizel. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I do apologize for getting out of order.
Mayor, hey, that's okay. Yes, no problem.
Well, that was a test to see if she was. Department heads, Ms. Chris? Frank? Chief Massey?
For those that, I'm sure are aware, Officer Austin got hurt discovering with a, um...
Bad guy.
Bad guy. By the Pizza Hut a couple of weeks ago. He's still off with a twisted knee, but it doesn't look like there's any serious damage. He'll be off until the 6th when he goes back to the doctor and hopefully he'll get back to it.
Chief Morris?
All business. Got one thing there. When are we gonna get back on the sewer line, car drive?
Okay.
I'm sure that.
Yeah, that's okay. I, I'll get with Joe and try to do that, maybe next week sometime.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay, I'll get with Joe, try to do that, maybe next week sometime, okay? I, we got a couple of things we gotta try to iron up this week and we'll try to go back. It's gonna be a house to house thing where we can catch them at home and then. These ones will be a little individual too, I mean, it's gonna be like, okay, we need, maybe we need twenty feet or we need thirty five feet here, we're just gonna see what we can add. Because like I said, it wasn't, it's not exactly equal in all locations and. We're gonna need more in some areas to stockpile and stuff, so it's just gonna, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be a challenge.
It is gonna be a challenge. It's gonna be a challenge.
Challenge.
Right. But we'll, I'll get with Joe, I'll call Joe this week and see if we can arrange a time maybe next week to start on that.
And it is.
Easy now. Easy now. What more, what more do you? Easy now.
Anybody else on?
We had spoken about the ditching in the road there where we're tying in on Fairmount. Are we going to be looking at filling those spaces when we're digging?
We actually put, well, there's more than one way we can do it. Perfect scenario would be after we get through. It'd be repaid, probably not gonna happen unless you could come up with a re- release enough motor fuel tax to actually mill the rest of it and pave it, it's, if not, we probably won't be able to put blacktop in it, it won't stay, we'll probably just have to, it's already squared out. Put concrete on it, only thing bad about that is when you get ready to resurface that, then you got a problem with the milling with the concrete.
I've been asked about it again, so I wanted to.
Yes, well, I think we lacked about, I think four more water to be connected. We actually pulled them off of that project to do the project at the industrial park for Land of Lincoln. We actually poured the pad, got the water in out there last week, got the, we're working on the sewer line, we got the electric in. Should've sent the transformer today.
There it is, sir.
So, and, you know, men done a good, I mean, they did a good job, they actually worked out there a couple of days and got all the electric in, you know, underground and, and back to the woods and stuff like that, and the water made dirt tap and everything like that, so they're moving right along.
And the vacant lot at Sixteenth and Buckle, and we already tore the house down. One of us rolled down, had a big tree on it, wherever we had that piece of.
Don't know if they ever got the, you know, that's the piece of property they actually found, the cistern and all, I'll have to check on it.
Okay.
Appreciate it, make me know on that.
Thank you, sir.
Gerald actually got that contract.
Yeah.
Gerald's one. His weed ain't paid yet, so.
I believe he's not wanting his money.
He supposed to went back and cleaned the small stuff up.
Yeah, well, we, we need to at least get out there and try to get them weeds down there, and they've got a big stump, I don't know if we're gonna eat that out or whether we'll leave it there or not, but that's, that's gonna get nasty real quick, and I think.
Where they tore the house down?
Yeah.
Hoping to sell it.
Well, I.
Now, we have a buyer also.
We have a buyer. There's a lot of snakes out in that area, and I got one of the neighbors out there that's complaining about it, so.
Well, if, if it keeps, if it keeps raining like we like work to do and the grass keeps growing, with no more help than we got, there's gonna be a lot of people complaining about grass.
Yeah.
But that's the only cost we can keep up with it.
That, that buyer wants it.
Yes. Let me check with Gerald more, I'll call him first thing anymore and see where he's at on that, if we can, maybe we can just go ahead and clean it the best we can right now, and so, take bids on it, so, okay.
Well, we can sell it and as is, can't we?
Sure.
I mean, you know, you know the cistern's here.
Well, no, that, that cistern had to be filled.
We have to.
Yeah, we did.
That cistern's still on, it has to be filled, and he may have that filled.
He may have just forgot about it.
Um, he's tore it down, he probably will forget about it.
I wouldn't think so.
You never know.
Okay, anything else on your old business, new business?
I just have a question, Mr. Bob, you have an industrial committee, committee tomorrow, don't you?
Yes.
Well. Yeah, it doesn't say that here, does it?
That's another. You're getting ahead. That was another test.
This has already been wrestled. I thought it, see.
Okay, you're gonna get a prize.
Thank you. Yeah, this alligator's been flipping fur.
Yeah. I'll explain that when we get there.
That's okay, I understand.
Was that the new business?
Yeah. Yes, sir, it's hit me.
Don't let them, don't let them off easy, Gerald.
Miscellaneous reports.
I better quit while I'm head.
No, you're head right now.
You're head right now.
Yeah, I got a good explanation for it.
Okay, that's fine.
Finance report, payment of salaries, payroll and contract bills. Moving of Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills.
Move on, that is a lot.
Second. Your money. I was giving y'all's money, so that's okay. That's right, call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes. As far as I know, we have no need for exacting reminders, Saturday, April the twentieth is West Collection, the Country Club Road Department on North Avenue, eight AM to three PM. That will be April the twentieth. Tuesday, April the twenty third, police and fire, finance, and this other one was a test. See who was looking at their packets and caught that mistake.
You said Country Club Road?
County Road.
County.
It's out by the county.
County Road. I misunderstood. Side of the county.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was last week. The, actually, we put the agenda out Friday, it was late. Neil put that on there. She said it was a test.
Yeah.
She actually just made a mistake, and of course, Mr. Midnight, by being the chair of that committee, caught it pretty fast, and I told him that it was, it was going to be a little test, there'll be something hidden in every agenda. And there probably will be for the next three or four years, because we do make mistakes on these things, but.
Yeah.
Or there's, other than own up in it, we're gonna put it as a test. Daniel's having, you know, for all of yous, Daniel's having a real time, she's having just a lot of issues and her, maybe, maybe not exactly her life, but everybody's life around it, that she's, it's, it's one of those caregiver type things and her mother's not doing well at all, then last week, her stepson had to have some surgeries, she's kind of trying to be the caregiver there and stuff like that. And, you know, I'm trying to give her as much leeway and, and I do understand all that, you know, I wish I had my mother to, to take care of, and I, I do know it's hard, you know, you're, you're trying to work, you know, eight, nine hours a day and stuff like that, and it's one of them situations, you're dangerous if you do, dangerous if you don't, if you're at work, you're worried about them, if you're not at work, you're worried about your work, and, and I know, I know there's people right here in this room tonight that's been through this very thing, I know Pris has with her mother, I know Joe, and, and Big Joe actually went through a hard time for many, many years, and so, but really, I don't know what I'd do down there if it wasn't for Pris, you know, Pris has got about nine jobs and stuff like that, and she does them very, very graciously, you know, short notice, hey, I can, I can answer the phone, there's, you know.
Open up the door.
I didn't really.
Well, we had a fat joke, now we got a short joke coming.
You know, and, and that's one thing that makes me so proud of what goes on in city hall and around city hall, is, you know, it wouldn't bother me, I know at times Jen's busier than other times, but it wouldn't bother me a bit to go across the hall and say, I need Julie, it'll always be an employee, it's not gonna be her.
What's that mean?
Just what I say. I do have a little peace and quiet over there, so, if you ever see Jen, Jen over there answering my phone, you know I'm a bad chick.
Anticipate.
Anyway, we're very fortunate, you know, to have people around here that can step up and stuff like that, don't rap, don't complain about and stuff like that, and that means a lot to us.
That's why you can't go over there. And you'll notice it also, Daniel's, that's why you can't go over there.
Okay.
So.
It was actually, the notice, the agenda was right.
The agendas are right, the reminders are wrong, and that's okay, legally, we're okay there.
Next item on there, Wednesday, April the twenty fourth, which I've already told you, one thirty to two thirty, the retirement, we'll have cake and ice cream here, the guys are just gonna come back and forth to say, take their break and stuff like that, and.
Then also, about thirty, we've got a condemned building.
We got a condemned building, we need to know if.
Yes.
Ordinance.
Okay.
What time?
Which one first to be first?
I've got mine right now at one o'clock.
Is that all right? I'm gonna put down there about one, two, we can, we can always go early, but we can't start early, so why don't we put it at one thirty, it's gonna take longer than that.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna take time.
You know that Daniel's already put out a, or ten at the time.
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't been off. Chris has got to finish it tomorrow.
Nobody's giving me anything, so.
I'll break it to you.
Okay, that's, if you, if you email something, call me and let me know, because I don't ordinarily get on her email, and I can't get my office email downstairs.
I'll handle, I'll handle it.
Yeah.
Yep, and also you send to me and I'll forward it again.
And if you got ordinances particularly, because we've been off since we've had Mr. Daughtry, try to remind them or remind me, I know Chief Massey and I have talked, he's got one, I know for sure he wants to see us do something on, he got three of them on page near mine. I know Chief Morris is, and he's working with Chad, there's a discussion he wants to have about the life safety code, and what do we want to do there, there's some issues coming up, because there's modifications coming down from the state on that, that you all need to hear about and weigh in on, and then I know Richard, you and David made a suggestion one time when we were looking at bidding, that we raise the bidding threshold to the twenty thousand, that's equivalent to the state amount, so I, I recalled that one, but I, I mean, I, I may not necessarily recall all of them that we've thrown out there, it's been a while, so if you think of some, by all means, either email me, call me, or something else if we need to, the draft's up.
Well, a lot of that things, we probably need to look at some stuff like that, stuff like that, you know, even Rick and I was in a meeting today on the way back and stuff, we was talking about, you know, our PLA and things like that, when we do things that's lasted for five or six years or something like that, that the way we do business and the cost of doing business, where, back a few years ago, five, ten thousand dollars was quite a bit, now then, it's not here as much. You know, it's just things change, so we, we kind of need to adapt to the changes.
Well.
Things not too bad in our life.
Committee assignment's gonna stay the same, don't it?
We'll, well, we just need to sit down and talk about it. If we can get enough, you know, where our people can be here where that we can actually have forums, I don't have an issue with changing back through any of those.
I just ask it.
While we wait and see what comes about in the next couple of weeks.
Thirty days.
Yeah, and then we'll see, if we need to, and certainly, you know, we need interviews and stuff like that, we just need to make sure we always have. So, you know, and it would be, I'd feel a lot worse about it if it was where that we didn't all, most of the time try to get hold of everybody, everybody's here, they could be here, and if you, you know, if you can't be, and we understand that, you just can't be, we always need to make sure we can have those three or four committees where that we can actually put a handle on, so we'll revisit, let's, let's wait for about thirty days to see where we're at. Anything anybody else would like to say before we go?
Well, I think this is a good start, everybody smiling and laughing, and I think this is a very, very good sign, so, I mean, for good things to happen.
And we're, Mr. Barfield, we're gonna have a good time.
Really, I agree.
I had a comment, he said that Chad's been out of his way, he's been care of business, he's got the, he's got the house. We're fired tomorrow.
Really, in saying that, we have very, very few complaints, you know, about personnel and stuff like that, every once in a while you're gonna have somebody, but most of the time it's because they want something done that you just.
Can't do.
You can't do, but most of the time they can be done, they work around us.
And Pris and I are gonna change places tomorrow, we'll see how this will work.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy, not tomorrow, Wednesday.
You're not gonna be there, is that right? Right.
We do need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Call the roll, please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.